Good morning. To all members, these microphones around the board table are very sensitive and this meeting is being recorded and webcast. Now to start the meeting, I'll ask Beverly Morris to read the Open Public Meetings Act. Beverly?
This is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice, this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star-Ledger, Yasbury Park Press, The Courier-News, The Daily Record, The Home News Tribune, The Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald. It was posted in the Essex County Hall of Record as well in Newark.
Thank you very much. Please rise and join me in honoring our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Present.
Essex?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Hunterdon? Jersey City?
Here.
Middlesex?
Here.
Monmouth?
Present, nonvoting.
Morris?
Here.
Newark?
Here.
Ocean?
I am here.
Passaic?
Here.
Somerset?
Here.
Sussex?
Here.
Union?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Governor's Office?
Here.
NJDOT?
Here.
NJ Transit?
Here.
Port Authority?
Here.
Citizens Representative?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have eighteen voting members present and dequorum.
All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the March thirteenth board meeting?
Being done, I'll offer the minutes for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. That brings us to my remarks. I'd like to take this opportunity to present my report. On our agenda today are five actions to fund key projects and another to set targets for required performance measures. One item, a minor amendment to add funding to the Route Seven Drainage Project in Kearney as requested by NJDOT, was just approved for the board agenda at a special meeting of the Project Prioritization Committee on Friday. It is not often that we have to call such special meetings, but in this case, it was necessary to meet unforeseen project changes and cost increases and to keep the project on track. I thank the members of the Project Prioritization Committee for their cooperation in getting this done on such short notice. As with much of the business that comes before this board, these actions follow many months of project development and close coordination with our partners and subregions, and all are grounded in and consistent with our long-range plan, Plan 2050: Transportation, People, Opportunity. To briefly highlight this connection, we're adding funding for the Portal North Bridge, identified in our plan as among our highest priorities for supporting rail train. We're adding funds not only to the Route Seven Drainage Project, but to state highway and bridge projects in Morris County in keeping with our commitments to fix it first, congestion relief, and resilience. We're transferring funds to NJ Transit to support development of the Essex-Hudson-Greenway Project, a welcome addition to the regional trail network, advancing our commitment to support walking, biking, and travel alternatives. We're endorsing thirty-two local transportation alternatives projects, reflecting our support for local action to meet livability, pedestrian safety, transit access, and other goals in our plan. And finally, our endorsement of statewide performance targets is a key approach to meeting our plan's goal of enhancing system coordination and efficiency. Thanks to all those on the board and the staffs of the subregions and partner agencies for their ongoing work to shape the investments brought before this board. One significant activity now underway is preparation of an updated Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, for fiscal years 2024 through 2027. This is the mechanism for drawing down federal funding to our region. The subregions are now reviewing the state's draft fiscal year 2024 Transportation Capital Program, which is the basis for the TIP. NJTPA's central staff is communicating with NJDOT, NJ Transit, and the subregions, working to address concerns and issues during development of the TIP, which also must undergo air quality conformity analysis this summer. The TIP is anticipated to come before the board as an action item in September. It is one of this board's most significant acts, totaling more than fourteen billion dollars in funding over four years. Like nearly all board actions since late 2021, the new TIP is very much shaped by the IIJA law, thanks to the increased funding it makes available, as well as its guidance and provisions on new and existing programs. The NJTPA, like most MPOs across the country, is actively working to take full advantage of the IIJA during its remaining three years. To provide a national perspective about developments in Washington and around the country regarding IIJA, we are fortunate to have with us today Bill K. Ruse, the Executive Director of the Association of Metropolitan Planning Organizations, or AMPO for short. Bill, we look forward to your presentation and insights. In terms of IIJA grant activity in the region, recently, the cities of Orange and East Orange and Essex County received a grant of assistance through the Thriving Communities Program. They will be exploring ways to implement improvements that will better connect their north and south sections across the divide of Route 280. These improvements were identified in a 2017 NJTPA-funded subregional study conducted by Essex County. They'll enhance safety for walkers and bikers, livability, and economic development, among other benefits. Subregions and communities are also actively looking into upcoming opportunities, including the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Discretionary Grant Program with a deadline of May 30th, the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program with a deadline of July 10th, and the Project Program for Resiliency Efforts with a deadline of August 18th. As always, you can get information on the NJTPA's IIJA webpage, and central staff can provide assistance and letters of support for applications. I should note that in recent weeks, the NJTPA also provided letters of support to communities seeking funding for projects from members of Congress through the annual appropriations process, also known as member-designated funding or earmarks. Before closing, I'd like to thank all those who participated at last month's transaction conference. I had the opportunity to moderate two NJTPA staff-led sessions, one on our Active Transportation Plan and one on our Municipal Assistance Programs. NJTPA's third vice chair, Jason Sarnoski, who also chairs the Freight Initiatives Committee, moderated a staff-led session on NJTPA's Freight Concept Development Program. Staff participated in a variety of other sessions and helped organize the conference. As always, it was very informative and well-attended. Finally, I'm pleased to announce that the next board meeting on July 10th will be held in my home county of Passaic, live and in person. We will announce the location and the details shortly. That concludes my report. Any remarks from NJDOT today?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to also express my appreciation to the Project Prioritization Committee and to the board for the quick action on the Route Seven project. That's a very important project for Route Seven and Kearney, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Any remarks from Transit this morning?
None today, thank you.
All right. That brings us, David, to the Executive Director's Report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming. Well, with the end of our fiscal year on July 1st or June 30th fast approaching today, I wanted to update the board on several studies and other work. Work led by both central staff and the subregions is reaching its final stages as we refine recommendations, address comments from stakeholders and the public, compile final reports, and more. A few highlights of some things that are sort of in their home stretch. We're now drafting the Regional Active Transportation Plan, which will guide development of our pedestrian bicycle network. Central staff is wrapping up work to validate our transportation model and to finalize an update of our freight rail-grade crossing assessment. In terms of concept development, two NJTPA-sponsored studies are nearing completion to identify preferred alternatives for freight improvements in Morris County and Somerset County, and four local concept development studies for road and bridge needs are continuing into next year. Five subregional studies are being finalized. These deal with a range of local needs, such as electric charging infrastructure, freight movement, and development of master plans in Essex, Hudson, Middlesex, Somerset, and Union Counties. Also coming to a close will be the current round of Complete Streets Technical Assistance provided to seven municipalities. This assistance has helped with plan development, walkable community workshops, demonstration projects, and more. Those are just a few examples of tasks in the current work program that are approaching the finish line. A similar comprehensive set of planning and project development activities will commence on July 1st, guided by the fiscal year 2024 work program that was approved by the board here in March. In the upcoming fiscal year, the NJTPA will continue to emphasize complete streets, the regional and subregional levels, including the demonstration projects I mentioned a moment ago. These involve temporary installations of bicycle lanes, corner bumpouts, pedestrian plazas, parklets, and other measures to test their effectiveness and community acceptance. It's a popular approach that can lead to permanent improvements, such as Jersey City's pedestrian plazas. Recently, Belleville installed colorful corner extensions near a school, and a similar demo project was just put in place in the city of Passaic. And those were actually highlighted in one of the panels that Chairman Bartlet referred to that was very good, and I think if people have questions about this, they can, not only can they reach out to us, but they can reach out to those municipalities and others who have done this work. It's been quite successful. So recognizing the growing enthusiasm for this valuable work, we've created a library of materials that towns and counties can borrow for such demonstrations: posts, paints, stencils, plastic barriers, benches, et cetera. The NJTPA website has details and an application, and any request should be coordinated with the appropriate Transportation Management Association for the area. Turning to IIJA-related matters, as the chairman mentioned, we continue to support efforts by subregions and municipalities in applying for the various grant programs. As always, please, please reach out to us if you have questions or need assistance or want a letter of support. Regarding the IIJA's Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, we are offering our subregions assistance in the development of local safety action plans, which are required to qualify for implementation grants under the program. In cooperation with FHWA's New Jersey Division and the FHWA Resource Center, a series of webinars on these action plans will take place over the summer, followed by an in-depth workshop in the fall. Details will be announced shortly to everyone. This all will lead to a consultant effort in our upcoming work program that will help any interested subregion develop their own local safety action plan. And another effort stemming from the IIJA, we're participating in a grant-funded effort under the first phase of EPA's Climate Pollution Reduction Program. This work covers the Newark, I'm sorry, New York, Newark, Jersey City metropolitan statistical area and will be led by the city of New York, working cooperatively with our counterparts in New York, the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council, also known as NIMTC, and the NJTPA. Activities will include development of local greenhouse gas reduction strategies that can be implemented throughout the region, and having this plan in place will enable counties and municipalities in the area, which does cover most of our region, to apply for implementation grants in Phase Two of that EPA program. Another effort that goes beyond our borders is our ongoing participation in the MAP Forum, Metropolitan Area Planning Forum, with other MPOs in New York, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. I should note that in late March, the group's Multi-State Freight Working Group sponsored a workshop on offshore wind development. It included discussion of the substantial economic activity connected to that industry. There is further information from that is available on our website. And before I wrap up, I too would like to echo what Chairman Bartlet said about transaction and, you know, thanks to the board members and the staff who helped organize the event and staffed our booth. We really had a strong presence at the conference, showcased a lot of our work, and, you know, it was just a really, a really good conference. It was nice to see as we get back into the swing of in-person conferences. And then last, speaking of in-person conferences, last week, we had our booth at the New Jersey Association of Counties Conference. I was pleased to moderate a discussion with NJTPA's staff and some of our consultants on some of our public engagement innovations. And then, just finally, just a few quick announcements. Today, we're distributing the new 2023 edition of our acronym guide, which helps us all better navigate the planning process. I like to refer to that as our all-time bestseller because like when we were at the conference, it certainly moves quickly from the booth. We have a spring virtual meeting of the Morris Canal Working Group set for next Thursday, May 18th, 10:30 to noon. We'll be hosting an in-person Autonomous Vehicle Symposium on Tuesday, June 6th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. right here in this room. Details for both of those meetings are available on our website on the calendar, and that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, David. So that brings us to our presentation. Bill K. Ruse serves as Executive Director of the Association of Metropolitan Planning Organizations, or AMPO, a nonprofit organization serving the needs and interests of MPOs like us nationwide. Previously, Bill worked at Building America's Future, an infrastructure advocacy coalition. He also worked for U.S. Senator Chuck Schumer of New York as Deputy Director of his Hudson Valley Regional Office. He holds a bachelor's degree in political science from Rutgers University and a master's in sustainable urban planning from George Washington University. Please welcome Bill K. Ruse.
Thank you, Chair Bartlet, and thank you, Vice Chair Kelly. And Dave, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I actually reside in New Jersey. It's actually in South Jersey, so please don't hold that against me. Go Sixers. Anyhow, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Thank you to Dave and the staff for all the great work that you do and supporting our organization, and it's really meaningful and critical, in fact, that y'all are involved in AMPO, and I'll get to that in a little bit. Also, just wanted to commend Dave on keeping that acronym book small. It's impressive. So I'll talk a little bit about today, a little bit about obligatory comments on AMPO, who we are, what we do, what we're about, and then I'll dive into sort of a national perspective on the IIJA and implementation, what we've been tracking, hearing, paying attention to, and sort of how that lines up with what's going on here in New Jersey. So a little bit about AMPO. These are our core values. There are two things that drive AMPO as an organization. The first is our members. We are a member-led, member-driven organization, and that's why it's so critical that NJTPA is involved in our organization, and we really appreciate the support. The other is our values. So we really value being a leading resource of information for our members and for our partners, impact, being able to influence what's going on on Capitol Hill and Washington, D.C., and serving in the best interest of the MPOs across the country. And then finally, collaboration. Our strength is our network, so we provide a forum and a number of opportunities for MPO staff and directors to come together in a number of different... So again, telling the story, a big part of what we do is communicate with members of Congress, and that conversation always starts with what the heck is an MPO? And then we sort of go from there based on what we're hearing from our members. So Dave actually has my personal cellphone, whether I like it or not. So we are in frequent communication, and, you know, it's always important for us to have our ear to the ground as to what's going on across the MPO community and currently here at NJTPA, and then we're able to communicate that back to members of Congress. Just a quick note, you know, roughly two-thirds of the MPOs aren't actually able to legally lobby on behalf of themselves, whether that's due to federal or state regulations, and so that's sort of where our organization steps in, and we're able to have those conversations on the Hill. So just a quick snapshot on the IIJA bill. You know, historic investment in surface transportation, a hundred-plus billion in grant programs, which a lot of new eligibility specifically for MPOs, which is really exciting. I think there are about seventeen or eighteen new programs specifically for, well, that MPOs were eligible for that were new in the IIJA. New formula programs to address carbon reduction and climate change, and then a heavy investment in electrification rail. So a couple of things that are new. David mentioned thriving communities. That's exciting to hear that there were some recipients here in the NJTPA planning area. Reconnecting communities and neighborhood access and equity. Again, new programs, and I'll get to this in a little bit, but both as a part of thriving and reconnecting, actually, and neighborhood access. In fact, there was a number, there was a significant amount of money for technical assistance, and part of an eligible use for that technical assistance is to work on applying for all of these discretionary programs because we know that that's a, excuse me, we know that that's a struggle across the country. It's a lot to navigate, understand if you have a project, what program is appropriate, you know, do you need a benefit cost analysis as part of that application? You know, what sort of technical capacity will my staff need to put that application together? There's a lot to consider, and right, there's no guaranteed return on investment at the competitive program. So, you know, we've heard anecdotally that some of these applications could cost anywhere from fifty thousand to a quarter million together, and then again, there's no guarantee on that, that you receive those funds. So anyhow, I'll get to that a little bit more later on. Carbon Reduction Protect and NEVI Program. Under the NEVI Program, I believe New Jersey has seen close to forty million already go out through that program, and I think New Jersey is in line to receive over a hundred million as part of that program. So that's exciting. And then housing, that's a big one, and there are some new requirements written into the bill encouraging MPOs to work more closely with housing agencies in their planning areas and try to coordinate planning as it relates to affordable housing, local housing patterns. So AMPO leadership actually met with HUD a couple of weeks ago to sort of strengthen and develop our relationship with them. The conversation was, you know, we are here at the table to have those conversations and really sort of advance the state of the practice as it relates to linking transportation planning, land use, and housing, but with that, we need some additional support. Can HUD provide technical assistance and access to programs, additional resources to have those come? So we're excited about that conversation where that's going to head, and we'll continue to push that information out. So just another couple of quick snapshots on the IIJA. Again, a historic amount of discretionary funds. This chart on the left shows the jump from the last year of the FAST Act, the last reauthorization bill, in discretionary funds to the first year of the IIJA. So from the 5.5 all the way up to the 28, it's a significant, a lot of money. That being said, the majority of the bill, three-quarters, a little over three-quarters, is still being sent out through formula funds. So, you know, it's important that we continue to plan and collaborate so that we're able to handle all of those funds because there's a lot that's coming at us. I'll get to that a little bit more too in terms of folks being able to handle all that new money program. So just pulled a couple of numbers and statistics from some of our resources, just in terms of where NJ currently stands as far as funds that have been announced. So to date, this was as of April, 5.2 billion. That's a combination of both formula and discretionary slash competitive. You know, that chart in the middle sort of shows where New Jersey lands in comparison to the rest of the country. And then just pulled together some stats comparing y'all to Maryland, simply just because of geography and population, and just again, in terms of comparison, New Jersey's actually doing quite well. And you're making my job here a little easier today, delivering good news instead of bad news, right? So just pulled a couple of those numbers together just to simply show that New Jersey is receiving a significant amount of money, and in terms of competitive discretionary programs, y'all are taking great advantage of those as well, as we heard from the chairman of the day. Just a quick snapshot on what some of those are. Y'all are more familiar with these than I am, but just wanted to mention, these are a select number of projects that will be funded through some of the discretionary programs, obviously the big one being the Hudson Tunnel. And this is a little bit dated in that it doesn't capture what Dave mentioned in terms of thriving communities, and then it also doesn't necessarily capture SS4A, Safe Streets for All. I know a number of folks in the room received some of those SS4A programs, grant funds as well. So again, just a quick snapshot on where the Gateway Hudson Tunnel project is. It did receive a significant amount of funds through the IIJA. And again, y'all probably know this better than I do, but just want to mention that I don't anticipate any project delay with the ongoing discussions related to the debt ceiling. We'll see how the next couple of weeks go, but I don't anticipate project delay as far as that goes. So just getting into a little bit about some of the resources that are available. This link is something that I bookmark and encourage y'all to as well. It's a timeline and table of all the different programs that are made available. USDOT does a pretty good job of keeping this up to date and refresh it regularly, so it's a good way to sort of keep track of when these notice of funding opportunities are made available and when the application deadlines are and sort of what's required as a part of that application. So as I mentioned, there are a number of resources to include a discretionary preparation checklist. So if you haven't all seen the USDOT Navigator just yet, I encourage you to check it out. That's where you'll find that, this previous table, as well as a preparation checklist and just sort of all of the different programs and resources that are available as a part of the IIJA. Some April updates. You know, we had heard that they are working on a database that will sort of allow you to query based on what you're looking for. So if I'm a small local government or if I have a specific project in mind, you'll be able to sort of plug that criteria in, and it'll filter through and show you what program's probably making the most sense for you. We're excited about that. And then, as I had mentioned, just a couple of new technical assistance programs that have come online or will be coming online. There was, as you can see, a significant amount of money both in reconnecting communities and thriving, specifically for technical assistance, and like I said, an eligible activity is working with you to develop an application for some discretionary programs, sort of working to navigate all that's out there. So a little bit about what we're hearing. Like I said, this is, it's a lot of money, a historic amount, both through formula and through discretionary program. And in addition, there's a lot of new programs that are being stood up, a lot of new requirements. We're constantly working with USDOT on guidance and trying to better understand how to implement all of this. And so we're all sort of drinking from the proverbial fire, right? We're all in this together, misery loves company. So I'm sort of here to deliver that message that, you know, if you feel like you're being challenged by everything that's coming at us, you're not alone. It's exactly what we're hearing from the rest of the country, and, you know, we as an organization are working closely with our partners. We have a great relationship with the National League of Cities and the National Association of Counties. We're frequently on the phone with them, just, you know, what are y'all hearing from your mayors and commissioners? You know, how can we, as the MPO community, help to be of assistance as we continue to navigate and collaborate on all of this? So a couple of those across the bottom. You know, this is what we've been hearing with our ear to the ground. We participate in a number of gatherings and presentations, such as this here today. There are a number of MPO statewide associations that get together on a regular basis, and so we're participating either in person or virtually to really, again, hear what's going on on the ground across the country. And these are sort of the things that are rising to the top. Workforce remains a huge issue just across the country and across all levels, local, regional, state, federally. It's a huge challenge that we're working with our partners to try to mitigate and address. The lack of local funds, that's an issue. I don't believe that's as much of an issue here, but it certainly is across the country. Coming up with that 20% of the local match to match that 80% of federal funds continues to be a challenge and taking advantage of all of these. You know, anecdotally, I had heard from a major metropolitan area, won't name names, but you wouldn't think that funds or a technical capacity would have been an issue, but it was, and they actually didn't apply for any of these discretionary funds or programs in the last two fiscal years because they weren't able to pull up the 20% match or really have the capacity on the half. So it remains a challenge, and, you know, we're working to find ways to assist our members in navigating that. And yeah, you know, I'll just end with, again, it's a lot of new programs and new funding, and we're all working this together, working to navigate it all, and our message is that, you know, a rising tide raises all ships. So if we collectively, at the local, regional, and state level, can work better together, then we all win at the end of the day. And, you know, it's about the services that we're providing and delivering, right? So I'll just finish with an anecdote. I recently heard an example in Georgia, in fact, of working with a local school district in suburban Atlanta. They outfitted a couple of school buses with sensors that communicated with traffic lights. So the idea was to get the school buses to school faster on their route and not effectively having to stop at any traffic lights where it made sense and where they were able to do so. And, you know, you would assume a couple of benefits from that, obviously reduction in fuel and better for the climate, savings and cost on fuel and this. What they weren't anticipating were a couple of really interesting things. One, the, the drivers reported significantly less stress because when, when they stopped at red lights, that's often when the children would get up and make a fuss, get into some trouble. And that wasn't occurring when they were able to go through all the green lights. And then, you know, most importantly, all of the kids that were on, on those buses were able to participate in the, the free breakfast that was provided. So there were a number of children that were effectively missing breakfast because their school bus was late. They weren't able to get to school on time and participate in that program. And so this ensured that every kid was able to participate in that free breakfast. So, you know, sometimes it's nice to take a step back and think about the impact that we can have as transportation planners and, and local elected officials. And I know we, we often get caught up in the, caught up in the day to day and sort of lose, lose sight of the bigger picture. So it's nice to sort of hear how some of those, some of what we do has a real impact on lives and children. So anyhow, I will end with that. Dave, I don't know if we have time for questions. Happy to follow up afterwards as well.
Thank you very much, Bill. That was great and I particularly liked how you ended there, pointing out the very practical impact of what we do, as simple as saving five or 10 minutes on a trip to school, the difference between eating and not, you know. I've said this to a couple of mayors over the last couple of weeks, you know, our work doesn't have to be complicated to be consequential. And things like DOT, re-timing a traffic light in downtown Little Falls has actually saved a whole lot of people a whole lot of time. And the fact that this is a forum where we can work together on that is something worth appreciating. I want to open the floor to members of the board to ask any questions for our speaker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, these IIJA funds, is there any clock running on them as far as commitment or expenditure?
Yes, so the life of the bill goes through fiscal year 2026, federal fiscal year 2026. And they're obligated, the, the money gets sent out to state DOTs on an annual basis and that, that money that gets sent out has a one-year life. And so there is sort of an annual clock and then the, the life of the bill goes through federal fiscal year 2026.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Just one, I was very interested in what you said about the coordination with HUD.
Yeah.
Housing coordination plans. Is there further information coming on that?
There is, yep. So we, we communicate with USDOT headquarters in DC on a, on a weekly, if not more frequent basis. And, and we are expanding our reach into other agents such as HUD and coordinating with, so FHWA, FTA and HUD on, we're trying to get them to actually put out formal guidance. They're a little bit hesitant to do that. And so where we've sort of met them halfway is gathering best practices. So there are a number of regional entities and MPOs and local governments that have been a little bit ahead of the curve on, on sort of buying land use, housing and station plans. So we're working with USDOT to gather some of those examples and package them together to be able to pack out to everybody. But I'm still pushing for actual guidance. We'll see how successful.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board or anybody else in the room want to ask a bill question before we move on? All right, well, Bill, thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So this brings us to our action items and I'm going to ask Commissioner John Kelly to give the project prioritization committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to report on the activities of the project prioritization committee. But first, I want to thank Commissioner Charlie Kenny for leading the April seventeenth meeting in my absence. The committee considered five action items at that meeting, four of which are on today's agenda. First is a minor amendment to the fiscal year 2022 through 2025 Transportation Improvement Program. You're going with your new book, that's the tip.
Yeah.
To add federal funding for the Portal North Bridge Project as requested by New Jersey Transit. The Federal Transit Administration has added twenty-five million dollars from the discretionary capital investment grants program for the project's engineering, right-of-way and construction phases of work in fiscal year 2023. This is listed as action item number one on today's agenda. Moving on, action item two is a minor amendment to the current tip to add federal funds for two projects in Morris County as requested by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. First, for Route 80 slash fifteen interchange project, the request is to ship, shift National Highway Performance Program funding for the right-of-way from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2025 and to increase this funding by two point eight million for a revised total of four million. This action also advances construction funding for the project from fiscal years 2029 through 2031 to 2027 through 2029. It also increases multi-year funding for construction by thirty-nine point five million dollars for a revised total of one hundred and forty-four point five million. Next, for the Route 80 bridges over Howard Boulevard project, the request is to change the source of construction funding from National Highway Performance Program Funds to Bridge Formula Program Fund and to add nineteen million dollars of this funding to construction in 2023 for a revised total of sixty-three million. Next, the committee considered a minor amendment to the fiscal year 2022 through 2025 tip to transfer NJTPA Carbon Reduction Program Funds to New Jersey Transit's Transit Enhancement Program as requested by the NJTPA and New Jersey Transit to advance portions of the Essex, Essex, Hudson Greenway Project. This is listed as action item three. Action item four is approval of projects for the 2023 Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program, which funds community-based, non-traditional projects designed to strengthen the cultural, aesthetic and environmental aspects of the nation's intermodal system. Sixty-eight eligible applications in the NJTPA region were received in response to NJDOT's solicitation. A technical review committee comprised of NJTPA Central Staff, NJDOT's Division of Local Aid, Division of Traffic Engineering and Safety and Bureau Environmental Program Resources reviewed the application. Thirty-two top-scoring projects in our region were funded with a total of thirty-five point eight million dollars. The list of these projects was included in the documents provided for this meeting. The state is expected to make an official announcement of all selected projects in New Jersey later this month. The final item considered by the committee at the April seventeenth meeting was the 2022 Financial Plan Update for the Route 80 Route 15 Interchange, Interchange Project in Morris County. As you know, projects costing from one hundred million to five hundred million in federal funding require financial plans. Since the last update of this project's financial plan, the cost has increased by about forty-eight million dollars due to inflation and the price of steel. To date, the project has spent nine million dollars, about five percent of the total cost. Construction is expected to begin in 2028 and completion is expected by the end of 2032. The committee approved this financial plan update and no further action is needed. Regarding the special meeting held last Friday, May 5th, as the chair said, the committee approved a minor amendment to the tip to add federal funds to the Route 70 Kearney Drainage Improvement Projects as requested by NJDOT. The additional sixteen million will address project changes and increase costs and bring the total cost to one hundred and thirty-one million, allowing this work to move forward. This is listed as action item five on today's agenda. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the project prioritization committee.
Right, thank you very much, Chairman. Let us move on to voting on these action items. The first action item concerns a minor amendment to the fiscal year 2225 tip to add federal funding for the Portal North Bridge Project as requested by NJ Transit. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
No move, New Jersey Transit.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments from the board members? Or from members of the public on this action? All right, Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon? Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris? Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Right, thank you. Next is a set of minor amendments to the 2225 tip to add federal funds for two projects in Morris County as requested by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Projects are the Route 80 fifteen interchange and the Route 80 bridges over Howard Boulevard. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Morris County moves.
Sussex, second.
Terrific. Any comments from members of the board? Or from members of the public on this action? All right, Beverly, please call the roll.
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right. Next, number three is a minor amendment to the 2225 tip to transfer NJTPA Carbon Reduction Program Funds to NJ Transit's Transit Enhancement Program as requested by the NJTPA and NJ Transit. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Chairman, I'd, I'd like to move, but also request a minor refinement to the item, the eighth and ninth where as clauses reference, reference the Greenway Project. In our letter, we had asked to move these funds to support the Greenway and Transitway Project as a sort of a shared corridor between basically. We'd just like to clarify that in the board.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. So that adds the words and Transitway to those clauses that you mentioned.
I would just add that that's very consistent with discussions that we had with NJ Transit and the documentation that they provided us to.
Okay, so is that okay? Board is nodding at me, that must be good. So with that clarification or amendment or whatever we're going to call it, do I have a second?
Second, Jersey City.
All right, any comments from members of the board? Or from members of the public on this action? Okay, Beverly, please call the roll.
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right, very good. Next, number four is approval of projects for the 2023 Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
No move, NJDOT.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Union, second.
Thank you, any comments from members of the board? Or from members of the public on this action? All right, Beverly, please call the roll.
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon? Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, per our special meeting last Friday is a minor amendment to the 202225 tip to add federal funds to the Route 7 Kearney Drainage Improvements Project as requested by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. This action was endorsed by the PPC during the special meeting last Friday. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
No move, NJDOT.
May I have a second?
Sussex.
All right, any comments from members of the board? Or from members of the public on this action? Beverly, please call the roll.
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon? Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right. That brings us to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. So now we will hear from Commissioner Charles Kenny with the PEDC report.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. The following is the report for the activities of the Planning and Economic Development Committee at the April seventeenth joint meeting. The committee considered one action item. It concerns support for pavement, bridge, travel time reliability and freight performance measures, targets set by New Jersey Department of Transportation. As part of the federal transportation performance management process, Central Staff has begun to set two and four-year targets for national performance measures for the period of January first, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. NJDOT and New Jersey's three metropolitan planning organizations work together to identify and agree upon statewide targets for the following measures. Six measures of condition for the National Highway System, or NHS, four regarding pavement conditions on interstate, non-interstate NHS roadways, and two regarding the condition of NHS bridge decks. Two performance measures involving the reliability of travel times on the interstate and non-interstate NHS. Last is the freight performance measure, which invokes truck travel time reliability on the interstate system. While federal regulations allow MPOs to develop their own targets, it is appropriate for the NJTPA to support the New Jersey statewide targets since they were collaboratively developed by NJDOT, NJTPA and the other two MPOs in the state and other stakeholders. In agreeing to the targets, the NJTPA commits to plan and program projects that will help meet them. The resolution supporting the statewide targets is listed as action item number six on today's agenda. Also, at the April meeting, the committee received an update on current funding opportunities under the IIJA. As the chairman noted, a number of programs are open for applications, including for safety, charging infrastructure and resiliency programs.
Also announced is a funding opportunity for the wildlife crossing programs aimed at reducing roadway collisions involving animals and preserving natural habitat. The application deadline is August 1st. Detailed information on applying for these grants is available at grants.gov. And relevant links can be found at the NJTPA's IIJA webpage. And that concludes my report, Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. So as you heard, we have one action item from this committee on today's agenda, supporting pavement, bridge, travel, time reliability and freight performance measure targets set by the NJDOT. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Morris moves.
May I have a second?
Middlesex, seconds?
Any comments from members of the board? Or from members of the public on this action item? Very good. Beverly, please call the roll.
Bergen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit? Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Right, thank you. Now I will call on Commissioner Sarah Sui, Vice Chair of the Freight Initiatives Committee, to give that committee report.
Thank you, and I'm pleased to report on the April 17th meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, also known as FIC on page 11 of the acronym guide, which featured our annual port industry update. The committee heard presentations by two officials with key roles in maintaining and improving port operations. The first speaker was Beth Rooney, Port Director, Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. She said the port has seen significant cargo growth despite numerous international supply chain challenges. For five of the last seven months, the port has been number one in the county or in the country handling a container volume of more than 9.5 million TEUs, which stands for 20-foot equivalent units. The port is also seeing a recovery in the cruise ship business. Ms. Rooney noted that the port is capturing a substantial portion of port volume from the West Coast that is being diverted due to labor concerns there and other factors affecting the inland movement of cargo from the West. Ms. Rooney then focused on two upcoming Port Authority projects to address access issues from the Newark Elizabeth Port Complex. One is the Port Street Corridor Improvement Project, which involves widening access lanes in the area, among other upgrades. On the rail side, the southbound connector project will allow for greater efficiencies in the train movements from the on-dock rail yard serving major container terminals. Next, John Donardi, President of the Shipping Association of New York and New Jersey, highlighted the organization's mission, which is to represent the interests of ocean carriers, terminal operators and ancillary services in improving port operations. The association negotiates labor agreements and was instrumental in achieving New Jersey's withdrawal from the Waterfront Commission, a decision handed down by the U.S. Supreme Court the day after the FIC meeting. He said this will expedite New Jersey's ability to vet and recruit much-needed labor at the port. Mr. Nardi noted that the Shipping Association and the Port Authority led the Council on Port Performance, which is involved in all aspects of the supply chain. The NJTPA is also a member of the council. Priorities of the organization for 2023 include issues related to environmental policy, land use improvements, chassis availability measures, infrastructure development and marketing strategies. The committee also received an update on the NJTPA's various freight planning activities and brief reports from committee members. The Port Authority reported that air cargo volume at regional airports has decreased compared to last year. While truck traffic on vehicular crossings has increased, also, the city of Newark announced that the city has received a grant for boundary street improvements from the state's local freight freight impact fund. Middlesex County announced the recommendations of its freight movement study will be presented at a public meeting. And Somerset County thanked all those involved in the freight concept development study for eliminating the rail grade crossing on Main Street and Bound Brook. This concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee report.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Sui. We now turn to the general public participation section of the meeting. As a reminder, we advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit on comments. The light on the timer will go from yellow, excuse me, from green to yellow when there are 30 seconds remaining, and then red when three minutes have been reached. We ask that you keep your comments within the allotted time. We will start with members of the public who are here in the room and have signed up to speak, and we will call on those who signed up remotely via Zoom. So Beverly, I believe you have those lists. Please call on the first speaker who signed up in person. How about remote sign-ups?
Not at this time, Chairman.